Policy Committee meeting on this Tuesday, May 13, 2025. Some housekeeping items before we begin. A reminder, this meeting is being recorded on Teams and the recording will be posted on HCDSP's website. Everyone, please mute your laptops and use the boardroom microphones when it is your turn to speak.
The Father, as we know it today,
is rich in the history and modern traditions.
Of many First Nations and the Métis.
From the lands of the Anishinaabe.
To the Atawandran.
The Haudenosaunee.
And the Métis.
These lands surround me greatly.
Our steeped-in Indigenous history.
As we gather today.
On these treaty lands.
Our Catholic social teachings.
Call us in solidarity.
With our Indigenous brothers and sisters.
So honor and respect.
The four directions.
Winds.
Waters.
Plants.
Animals.
And ancestors.
That walked before us.
All of these wonderful elements of creation exist.
Gifted to us by our Creator God.
We acknowledge and thank.
The Mississaugas of the Credit First Nation.
For being stewards of this traditional territory.
Thank you. Let us begin our meeting with an opening prayer by trustee Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord, we come before you seeking your guidance and wisdom as we engage in this meeting. May your Spirit be with us, illuminating our minds and hearts, helping us to listen attentively, communicate clearly, and work together in unity. May we be open to new ideas, willing to compromise, and focused on finding solutions that honor your will. And I will say the Lord's Prayer. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. Our trespasses we forgive those who trespass against us. And he does not temptations.
Thank you very much, trustee Murphy. We're going to move on to item number two, which is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, may I please get a mover to approve? Trustee Duarte, may I please have a seconder? Trustee Saunders? All in favor, or is anyone opposed? You, seeing none, the motion now carries. We will move over to item number three, which is declarations of a conflict of interest. Is anyone here, can anyone have, does anyone have any conflicts of interest to declare this evening? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to item number four, which are, which is delegations. We do not have any delegations this evening. Moving on to item number five, approval of the minutes. Are there any errors, additions, or deletions to the minutes of the April 8, 2025 Policy Committee meeting? Seeing none, may I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 8, 2025 Policy Committee meeting? Thank you, trustee Agnew. Could I please have a seconder? Trustee Duarte, thank you. So all are in favor, or is anyone opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes and the minutes are approved. Thank you. Let's move on to item number six. So moving on to item number six, which are action items. We will, this evening, excuse me, the first action item on our agenda is policy I-30, Video Surveillance. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the Policy Committee recommends that policy I-30, Video Surveillance, be forwarded to the May 20, 2025 Regular Board Meeting for Approver? I am looking for a mover.
I'll move it.
Okay, trustee Murphy and trustee Carabella. Thank you. Mr. Griswick, you now have the floor and you are online. There you are. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Policy I-30, Video Surveillance, was reviewed as part of the regular policy review cycle. The purpose and references have been updated. The definitions have been updated with current language. The principles and requirements have been updated with clarifying language to reflect current processes, and minor housekeeping changes have been made throughout.
Thank you, Mr. Griswick. Superintendent Bukich? Commentary?
This would fall under Superintendent Boff's and our privacy manager, Mr. Griswick, so he's happy to answer any questions, should there be any.
Perfect. Thank you for that, just for summary. Thank you. Trustees, I will now open the floor to any questions. Seeing none? I don't see any. Trustees, we will now take it to a recorded vote of the main motion. Trustee Agnew.
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
Favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Me too.
Trustee Powell, online?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
I am also in favor. It passes. The policy will be brought forward to the May 20, 2025 Regular Board Meeting. Thank you. Moving on, we are now moving on to item 6.2. The next action item on our agenda is policy II-15, International Indigenous Languages Elementary Program. Trustees, can I please have someone move that the Policy Committee recommends that II-15, International and Indigenous Languages Elementary Program, be forwarded to the May 20, 2025 Regular Board Meeting for Approval? May I please have a mover? Trustee Saunders? Looking for a seconder. Trustee Duarte, thank you. Superintendent Crowell, you now have the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Madam Chair, please to bring policy II-15, International Indigenous Languages, for review. We've made some minor changes in terms of the references and requirements, and some minor housekeeping changes throughout. Happy to answer any questions that trustees may have.
Thank you, Superintendent Crowell. Trustees, I will now open the floor if anyone has any questions or clarifications. Okay, seeing none, I will now take it to a recorded vote of the main motion for item 6.2. Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Favor.
Trustee Powell, online?
In favor.
Thank you. Trustee Murphy? Trustee Kennedy? Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Agnew?
I am also in favor, and it passes unanimously.
This policy will be brought forward to the May 20, 2025 Regular Board Meeting. Okay, 6.3, moving on. 6.3, so the next action item on our agenda this evening is policy II-44, Student Mental Health and Well-Being. Trustees, may I please have someone move that the Policy Committee recommends that policy II-44, Student Mental Health and Well-Being, be forwarded to the May 20, 2025 Regular Board Meeting for Approval? May I please have a mover? Trustee Agnew, looking for a seconder?
I'll second.
Trustee Kelly, thank you. Superintendent Jack Caldera, you now have the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Madam Chair. Policy II-44, Student Mental Health and Well-Being, was reviewed as part of the regular policy review cycle. The policy has been updated by staff in consultation with SEAC members at the April Special Education Advisory Committee, or SEAC, meeting. The purpose and references have been updated. The principles and requirements have also been updated with some clarifying language, and minor housekeeping changes have been made throughout. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Jack Caldera. Trustees, I will now
Yeah, thank you through you, Chair. Just a quick question about the updates to the references. So it says that the Ontario Equity Education Plan is struck out. I think it's something like that. I was just wondering why it was struck out. Is it outdated and stuff? I just wanted to get some clarity on that. Thank you.
Thank you for that questioning, trustee McGuire. Superintendent Jack Caldera?
Through you, Madam Chair. Yes, that policy has been redacted from the ministry, so we removed it to reflect that it's no longer in circulation.
Thank you. Trustee McGuire, do you have any follow-ups or clarifications required?
No, thank you so much.
Perfect. Okay, trustee Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Under Principles, there is a part struck out that reads, "Responding to the teachings of Jesus Christ to love one another as I have loved you." And I'm just curious as to why that was struck out and who decided to strike that out.
Thank you, trustee Murphy. Through Director Klein to Superintendent Jack Caldera.
Through you, Madam Chair. We updated the language, so the format of the other policies, so it's consistent language. And we've embedded the multi-year strategic plan so that we have the terms belonging and becoming as part of the policy as well.
Thank you, Superintendent Jack Caldera. Trustee Murphy, do you have a follow-up?
I, I don't.
Thank you. Okay, I do not see any more questions. Anyone online? Oh. Trustee Kennedy?
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. So just, so just a follow-up. So why exactly was it, so it struck out because there's other language? Did having it in there conflict with something else in the Principles?
Trustee Kennedy, over to Superintendent Jack Caldera.
Through you, Madam Chair. No, it's just the, while we were looking at the components of this particular policy consistent with the other language and the updates that are happening in the other policies, we wanted to make sure that we were reflecting a consistent message. So it's not that it would add or take away from that principle, but we were shifting to the multi-year strategic plan and the language that is embedded in the multi-year strategic plan, achieving, believing, belonging, becoming. So that was the intention behind the change.
Thank you, Superintendent Jack Caldera. Trustee Kennedy, do you have a follow-up?
Yeah, so who's on the Policy Committee that makes the changes?
Thank you, trustee Kennedy. Superintendent Jack Caldera, maybe you could speak to this particular policy?
Through you, Madam Chair. So there is a dedicated committee of administrators. I know Superintendent Bukich oversees that. And then as far as the contributing members of this particular policy, we have the senior manager of mental health programming, who's also our social work senior manager, as well as our members of SEAC, myself, and our child and youth counselor, senior managers. So to answer your question, Committee of Dedicated Administrators, members of the senior management team that oversee mental health programming, as well as members from SEAC.
Thank you, Superintendent Jack Caldera. I do have another hand up. Trustee Carabella. Trustee Kennedy, if you want to get back in the, trustee Carabella?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Along the same, what we're talking about, I was noticing when that phrase was taken out, there wasn't really like a Catholic, a very obvious Catholic dimension to this policy, or like a reference to, to Catholic teaching, or like about spiritual health as well as mental health. It references physical and mental health on the second page under Principles. And I'm wondering if spiritual health can be added, or is this the place, or some kind of phrasing that, you know, understands the full, the full person.
Thank you. Trustee Carabella, over to Superintendent Jack Caldera.
Through you, Madam Chair. We included the language of creating the safe, caring, accepting, inclusive, and welcoming to be consistent with the language that's also embedded in our multi-year strategic plan. So that's the spirit of the changes, so that it is consistent with that messaging. I'm not sure if you have a suggestion, or if there's a particular phrase that you wanted to include for consideration to the committee, but it is
Superintendent Jack Caldera, I think Superintendent Bukich wants to say something.
Thank you, Chair. I can add some information there. Trustee Carabella, if, if we look at the MYSP under Belonging, we've taken the language right from that description under we are community, pardon me, that accompanies, and specifically supports students and staff to thrive in their physical and mental health. But certainly, we could add spiritual health if it's the will of the trustees. We could add the word spiritual.
Thank you, Superintendent Bukich. So adding suggestion spiritual health to the actual policy under Principles, or to the MYSP? Okay, thank you. Trustee Carabella, do you have a follow-up?
Okay, well, let me think about that one. I didn't know if that was actually the phrase right there. If it would be supporting students to thrive in their, in their full, full potential, right? We always talk about spiritual, mental, spiritual, mental, physical, social, and academic, right? Their excellence. Well, the other, just before I propose that as an amendment, the other idea I had here was going down Principles, the second last bullet, where it talks about embedding a culturally responsive and identity-affirming approach. You know, this is where like really, I guess what I'm looking for is that this children of God, this notion that we're all children of God, that can, you know, which speaks to their spiritual health as well as, as their identity. That's another idea, if anyone has a comment on that, thought of that.
Trustee Carabella, and I think what, I'm not sure, please correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to speak for you, but I think the theme here is the MYSP, that's particularly the belonging portion, is our umbrella, under which all these policies are created. So the MYSP is our umbrella that talks to belonging and all those themes, and then these policies just kind of speak to the individual characteristics. Is that what you were saying, Superintendent? Is that what you were saying to Superintendent Bukich?
Chair, if I can, I can add, trustee Carabella, that that's, that's been our approach to all of the policies and procedures. When we propose amendments, is to align the amendments to the multi-year strategic plan pillars. So if, if under, and I don't know if Claudia were, were able to bring it up, but under believing, we are distinctly Catholic, it does state honor and respect the inherent dignity of each student and staff member. So that, that's the, that's the first bullet. The second bullet is copying under belonging, the exact language of support students and staff to thrive in their physical and mental health. So when we do choose language from the MYSP, we try and make it as most relevant to the policy and the spirit of the policy.
Thank you, Superintendent Bukich. Trustee Carabella, or I can move on to trustee Saunders. He's had his hand up for a bit.
Can I propose an amendment?
Sure.
So I would propose that we just unstrike that and just leave it the way it was.
So trustee Saunders, which portion do you want to unstrike?
Responding to the teaching of Jesus Christ to love one another as I have loved you. Seems like a good thing to have for a Catholic school board. So my proposal would be just to leave it in as it was and remove the strikeout.
Claudia, will you bring that up on the screen for us? Okay, so to leave, so trustee Saunders, is this the intent to leave in that third bullet? Okay. Would this be a friendly amendment? Oh, I'm looking around the table. Is anyone in opposition to that? Trustee Agnew, okay. So we will have to turn that into an amended, a motion to amend? So I'll need a mover and a seconder. Trustee Saunders moves it? Okay. Let me just make some notes. Okay, trustee Saunders, you are, you can speak to that.
Yeah, I just think it's a good idea. I mean, to take it out, I'm not really sure why would we want to take it out. I understand that there's consistency with the multi-year plan, but I think it's, I think it's something important, and I think it distinguishes us from, from our co-termalist board and other boards. So I think it's a good thing to have. That's, that's it. We can go right to the vote if you want.
Okay, I'll just leave anyone other. Thank you, trustee Saunders. Any other trustees would like to speak to that at all? Okay, seeing none. So what we're, oh, sorry, trustee Murphy?
Yeah, I would be in supportive of it, Madam Chair. I just think like, how, I mean, it doesn't interfere in any way with the belief pillar of the MYSP. In fact, I think it adds to it. And I think it's a nice sentiment to have in there to say, like, I think it reflects back on the accompaniment part of our MYSP, so I think it's a great addition to public value.
Okay, thank you, trustee Murphy. Anyone else? Okay, if not, so we are voting on the policy as amended here on the screen, okay, everyone? Okay, so I am going to start with trustee Saunders.
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Murphy?
I'm in favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Favor.
Trustee Kelly?
Abstain.
Okay. Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
Abstain.
Abstain. Trustee Agnew?
Opposed.
Opposed. Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
And I am in favor. One, two, three, four, five, six in favor, one opposed, two abstentions. So the, this policy is amended now. So we can go back to the list, I think, so trustee Kennedy or trustee Saunders, you're both have your hand up. Trustee Kennedy, would you still like to speak to the policy as amended? No? Okay, so could you put your hand down for me, so you don't confuse me? Okay, that's what I thought. So go ahead. Pardon? You may go back in. Yes, you may.
Okay, thanks. So I just have a question. So we, through you, Madam Chair. So the Principles essentially should relate to the strategic, the MYSP is what we're saying, right? But do they have to be directly? Like, for instance, if I just pick the fourth point from the bottom, supporting students, parent guardians, and families with mental health issues, challenges, or distress, like, is that in the MYSP? Like, or, you know what I'm saying? Like, because we've taken, looks like, decided to take something out, but all, do the other things have to be specifically in the MYSP under Principles all the time? Or can there be extra things in there?
So, good questions, trustee Kennedy. So Director Klein, it's kind of a question about MYSP and what that all means and how it blankets all the other work we do. So would you like to speak to that?
Sure, Chair. The question though was, are we limited in terms of numbers of Principles, I think, right? I don't think we are. There, there's no handbook on that. I think the, often I find in writing, the less is often better, more succinct, a little more pithy within that, and you don't paint yourself into a corner in terms of, you said you were going to be doing that. I do like the idea of that, as I think trustee Kennedy pointed out correctly and rightly, that it has to link to the, the goals and the priorities that we have, which have, you know, fairly broad strokes to them. I'm not sure if any trustees want to weigh in on that too, since this is a question specifically about how we write policy.
Thank you, Director Klein. I will speak to that. I, you know, I, the MYSP is our main, is our main lead, right? That, that's what dictates everything we do at our board, that MYSP, right? It's very, very important. My impression, policies need to be the direction. So in a ship, it's the direction of the ship, and then how it all works goes into the procedure. So generally, they should be general, right? A policy is a direction. How do we want to steer the ship? The procedures are the ones that Director Klein and all his amazing staff dictate. How does it actually work? What's the logistics of it? So, so I think we just sometimes need to be careful that we have the MYSP that guides it all, and these policies, depending upon the topic, are the things that we need to say, okay, Director Klein and staff, I need you to make sure that policy is happening, and then the procedures will tell them how to get there. That's my opinion, as Policy Chair and Janet O'Hern Chernoda, so take it for what it's worth. But I think that the MYSP is totally what guides us. And everything that's written in this board is under the umbrella of the MYSP. All four pillars, so. Anyone else like to speak to that? No? Okay. Yes, trustee Murphy?
I just wanted to mention, like, under believing, it says we are distinctly Catholic, so that would be like the heading for that pillar. And I think that this, just to reiterate, not to belabor the point, but I think that this does distinguish the Principles from another non-Catholic board, so, anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Yep, fair point. Trustee Powell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a quick question. Do we have, is it typical to have a Bible verse within our Principles, like in other policies?
Thank you, trustee Powell. Through Director Klein, to maybe Emmy? Bukich, Superintendent?
Thanks for the question, trustee Powell. It's not typical, actually, to have scripture. It might have been a previous practice, but generally speaking, we, we don't have scripture. We related again to the, the MYSP language.
Thank you, Superintendent Bukich. And I think that's what Superintendent Jack Caldera was trying, they were trying to just get consistency, I think. I don't think they were trying to literally remove the teachings of Christ, but just to make it consistent with the rest of the policies. But it's fine. We voted for it, so it's. Thank you, trustee Powell. Any follow-up? I'll take that as an
No, that's good. Thank you.
Thanks. All right. I would like to move on. Are we ready to move on to vote on the motion as amended? Oh, trustee Carabella, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I wanted to go to the last section about the focus area on suicide prevention, intervention, and postvention. And under school responsibility to build common understanding about suicide amongst staff and school mental health leaders. So maybe to clarify what, what is the common understanding to just, it would be our Catholic teaching against, or like, what, what are we getting at when we're saying common understanding? So I, I would read that and understand that it's against suicide, suicide prevention. But our society is very much with, with made, which is against our teaching, suicide assistance, actually. You know, so I think maybe we have to be, maybe some, we need to, to say something more clear about our position against suicide. Or are, are we instructing children at that level about that? Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Carabella. So bullet point number one, under school responsibility, I think trustee Carabella is looking for some clarification of what that understanding is, and as far as school responsibility.
Sure. Do you mind?
Thank you, Director Klein.
So I'll start, and I might tip it off to Superintendent Jack Caldera. It is important when it comes to addressing issues of mental health that there is a common language and a common understanding. Teachers, EAs, principals, and other, we'll call them frontline educational workers, are often the ones who would be encountering students or staff who would be using language that might, might suggest, or relating and sharing information that might suggest that there is a cause for concern. And that, for instance, we have many staff that are trained in a practice called Safe Talk, which has been shared amongst other boards as well. As someone who's participated in it personally, it is extremely impactful in terms of relaying people, or increasing people's understanding and respect for warning signs that, again, should be responded to by any caring and loving adult. So just one small example, but it's important for the staff who do participate in that, that they then maybe break down some of their own biases and misunderstandings, and that there is a common understanding of what it is. So then we can respond in a way that maybe before some training like that has taken place, we might have shied away from language around suicide, and we engage in a proactive and purposeful way. And I personally believe it's a, it's a lifesaver, and I know that staff members who participated in it have found it impactful for them professionally and very often personally. But there's a, a wide array of, again, of, of training and understanding around this that we don't always know the lives that we save.
Through you, Madam Chair. I, I was going to reiterate a number of the points that Director Klein has shared, hoping that that gives clarity with the words from my mouth.
Thank you, Superintendent Jack Caldera. So I'm just moving on. I see you want to, Superintendent Bukich?
Thanks. I just wanted to add, trustee Carabella, if you look above, the focus of this area is on prevention, intervention, and postvention.
Right.
Thank you for that, Superintendent Bukich. I, I will move on. I don't know, trustee Murphy, your hand is up? Okay, trustee Carabella. So I'm going to move on to trustee Filbert.
I just wanted to add to trustee
Thank you for that. So more education than advocacy. So nice to get a student perspective. It really is. Thank you for that. Trustee McGuire?
Yeah, just to add on to that and stuff, I just wanted to say like, a lot of the education that I've received in schools, again, like Sophia said, has been really positive on how to support people if they are in crisis. And unfortunately, there is a trend where youth mental health and stuff is on the rise in our society ever since, specifically with COVID. So I think it's especially important that we have this language within our policies to ensure that all of our staff and students are aware of how to, you know, support those who may be struggling and stuff, maybe at that point. And it's really, really important. Like Director Klein said, it's a lifesaver. So I just wanted to throw that extra student perspective in there and stuff to support what student Trustee Filbert and everybody else has said. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee McGuire. Another intelligent student speaks. Does anyone have any other questions? I do not see any questions. Okay, so let's move on. We are going to vote on this policy as amended. Okay, so Trustee Carabella?
I'm in favor. Thank you.
Trustee Kelly? Trustee Agnew?
In favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Favor.
Trustee Murphy?
Favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
In favor.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
I am also in favor. So the policy as amended has passed and will move to the May 20th, 2025 regular board meeting. Thank you. Okay, moving on to our last action, action item for this evening, 6.4. The final action item on our agenda is Policy II-49, English as a Second Language, or ESL, and English Literacy Development, ELD, Programs and Services. Trustees, may I please have someone move that the policy committee recommends that II-49, English as a Second Language and English Literacy Development Programs and Services be forwarded to the May 20th, 2025 regular board meeting for approval? May I please have a mover? Thank you, Trustee Agnew. Looking for a seconder?
Duarte.
Trustee Duarte, thank you. Superintendent Crowell, you now have the floor.
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. And through you, pleased to present Policy 2-49 for review of policy committee. Minor changes were made again to definitions and principles and some housekeeping changes throughout. Happy to answer any questions that trustees may have.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Crowell. Trustees, I will now open the floor if anyone has any questions. Trustee McGuire? Your hands are not old. For the record. That's right. Okay. I don't see any questions at all, so we can move forward with a vote for this policy, item number 6.4, Policy II-49. Okay, Trustee Agnew?
Favor.
Trustee Duarte?
In favor.
Trustee Carabella?
In favor.
Trustee Kelly?
In favor.
Trustee Kennedy?
Favor.
Trustee Murphy?
In favor.
Trustee Powell?
In favor.
Trustee Saunders?
Abstain.
Trustee McGuire?
In favor.
Trustee Filbert?
In favor.
I am also in favor. Two, four, six, eight. Eight in favor. It passes, so the policy will be brought forward to the May 20th, 2025 regular board meeting. Item number seven, moving on. We have no discussion items this evening. Items 8.1 and 8.2, information items are the administrative procedures provided for your information. And these were in brackets, already approved at the May 5th, 2025 senior administrative meeting. Item 8.3 in the agenda lists the upcoming agenda items for the final policy committee meeting on June 10th, 2025. Unbelievable. Okay, moving on. Item number nine, which is entitled miscellaneous information. We do not have any miscellaneous information at this time. Item number 10, correspondence. We do not have any correspondence submitted. Item number 11, we did not have to go in camera this evening. So we're moving on to item number 12, which is the motion to excuse absent committee members. So the only one absent is Trustee Yaboah. Could I please have a mover to excuse her absence? Trustee Agnew and Trustee Carabella, saw your hand up, seconded. That Trustee Yaboah is to be excused. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Seeing no one opposed, that passes. Item number 13, I'm looking for someone to put a motion forward to adjourn. Trustee Agnew, thank you. May I please have a seconder? Trustee Carabella? Anyone not in favor of adjourning this evening? Thank you. We will now end the meeting with a closing prayer by Trustee O'Hern Chernotta. That's me. In the sign of our faith, in the Father, Son, Holy Spirit. Gracious God, thank you for guiding our time together. May the decisions made here bear good fruit and may we carry forward your wisdom and peace. Bless our work, our hearts, and all those we serve. We ask this to Christ our Lord. Amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you, everyone. Be safe.